My name is Marcus Hudson. Last name is H U D S O N. My address is five one four North Fourteenth Street, apartment three, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight nine one zero one. I'm here to speak on the item number thirty-eight.
So sir, Mr. Item thirty-eight is going to be a public hearing. You can speak now or when we call the item?
Is okay if I speak now?
You can speak now.
Okay, thank you. All right. We are not vehicles obstructing traffic in the middle of roadways. We are not stationary statues that are unable to move out of the way and let people navigate around us without being put in danger or harm's way. So any claim will be absurd and outrageous, and any fine and imprisonment will be unwarranted and unjustified. Street performing is protected by the U.S. Constitution. Any effort to enact restriction of rules barring and unsanctioned entertainment have been struck down in court. Street performer is legally considered an artistic free speech and is protected under the First Amendment. Performing over a hundred, I perform over a hundred Frank Sinatra songs on the bridges for a living. That's how I make my income. Few facts about Frank Sinatra. He recorded eighteen hundred recordings, sixty movies, one thousand performances, six Oscars, and won three Grammys and made sociological history. He also pioneered the entertainment, the entertainment history and industry in Las Vegas, which makes this the entertainment capital of the world. And his humble beginning started as a street performer in Hoboken, New Jersey, in a group called the Hoboken Four. And also wanted to state, in the State of City address, the mayor stated in January tenth, two thousand nineteen, that Las Vegas received awards and is known as a city of compassion on an international scale. And I'm hoping that in two thousand twenty-four, we can continue to be recognized as a city of compassion and, and one that doesn't criminalize and punishes talented, hardworking, street performers that instead of working the nine to five and living paycheck to paycheck, choose to perfect their crafts, making a living performing on these bridges and using it as a bridge to a successful music career. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I ain't got no speech set out and nothing like that, but I'm also speaking on item thirty-eight. My name is Sean. I am the son of man. That's the name that I go by, many other names I go by, but for the most part, it's unconstitutional to do anything to obstruct our freedom of speech, our freedom of travel, our freedom of assembly, our freedom of press. And by performing on the bridges, I've been here for five years. I've paid my bills. I've paid my taxes. I'm enjoying my life. I've stayed out of Human Affairs for twenty-six years now, but putting a thousand dollar fines on a flow zone for people to get past and feel safe in a world where there are literal people going crazy and stabbing people just because, oh, I thought you was laughing at me. And we're supposed to move off the bridge and stop singing or stop beating drums and all this because you think it's unsafe? Like, I think it's unsafe to walk outside, but I still gotta walk outside and go get something to eat every day. Another issue that seems to be going on around this world is the false concept that we are all equal. We are not. As I stated, I am the son of man. A war was fought, the son of man versus sons of God. They left children. We are all not the same. We have tillers up the ground, and we have those who came from the heavens. So to that heavenly father, I say, nah, I'm good. The ancient of days, the owner of this earth, the Lord who came before and the days before you came from the garden and invaded this earth, we still here, and we just wanna enjoy our life on this planet and continue using our voice, our talents, our gifts to satisfy our God and live our life. But the way this world has gone, all this darkness, this corruption, this evil, these fires, volcanoes, the signs that are being shown, just as the Bible has predicted, proves that history and religion are one and the same. Religion is the stories of life. Science is the studies of life. And with that being said, again, I am the son of man. I know who I am. So I am urging you all, don't issue any type of ordinance towards that bridge, any bridges in Vegas. Let us be. Let us be free, living our lives, being happy, working with the little scraps that you left us, because we already dying. We all dying, even y'all dying. But I'm gonna leave it at that and just know, only the angel's son skin burn in the sun. That's it. That was the punishment given by God unto the angels and their children. Their skin will burn in the sun, and they will be cast into a lake of fire. The judgment day shall come, and the judgment day is here. So again.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jeremy Brooks. I'm here to speak on item thirty-eight. First and foremost, I've been a resident of Las Vegas since two thousand eleven and moved from L.A. I am a musician, full-time musician. I became a street performer as well, studied under some of the greats. And I watched this city change over time, you know? Like I said, everything, like he was saying earlier, we're protected under the First Amendment, and I would say around about two thousand, two thousand eighteen, a lot of things changed with our rights on the streets, you know? And it had to do with just injustice and people not being orderly and everything, and we all suffered for it. I suffered for it as well, because this became a full-time situation for me. My family suffered, and I worked, I tried to work another job and all that stuff and everything, but I'm a musician. This is what I do. This is what I'm called to do, just like your call to, to, to your, your job and everything that you do and everything. So when you guys pass these laws and everything, it affects more people than what you think. So in two thousand eighteen, they got rid of pretty much street performing, said we had to get business licenses and all that stuff, and that was unconstitutional and everything. I saw people getting arrested, people getting thrown up against the shields on the bridges by cops that I knew. And I never got arrested, you know? And I mean, I had to go out there and provide for my family. I had to sneak out there and try to perform. I got tickets, you know what I'm saying, back and forth. I fought them in court. I fought over seven tickets in court with the same judge, Judge Sisento, to the point where he got tired of it, and he said, this is ridiculous. And he sent me to criminal court with criminals, criminals, that people that murder people, people that, people that do wrong things, and I'm out there supporting and, and, and helping people with my music. I'm a very positive, I play drums. That's what I do, everybody. I play drums and I play it at a high level. I'm one of the best drummers in the world, and I know that absolutely. And my, my record and everything, everything that I've done, it speaks for it. But at the same time, it has to be a fair game for everybody. We, we all need to have the opportunity to be able to go out and, and to be ourselves at the same time, and this is what this country represents for us as Americans and everything. So I just wanted to put that out there. I do support this when it comes to street performance with the bridge, because I'm gonna tell you something.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
How ya doing, y'all?
Good morning.
Michael Esquillen, also another street performer. Uh, I'm gonna keep it brief, you know what I'm saying? I feel like, I'm sorry, did you?
Would you, would you tell us your name right directly into that microphone so we can hear it?
Michael, Michael Robert Esquillen, sir.
Thank you. And then speak into the microphone.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So my fellows, they already pretty much said everything that needed to be said, but I just feel this is, like you said, is, we're not obstructing, we're not harming anybody, we're not selling any drugs, we're not, we're just trying to stay out of trouble. I myself have actually done two months in Clark County, you know what I'm saying? It's a way for me to stay out of trouble, you know what I'm saying? Although it is very tempting to do bad things sometimes, but it's, this is, I am a drummer as well, just like Bunny, you know what I'm saying? So there's actually been people who've come from all over the world, and they say that, you know what I'm saying, our performances help, like it just, it, it makes them smile or, you know what I'm saying? It just helps them with their day, go about their day, you know what I'm saying? It's, we're really not trying to harm anybody, you know what I'm saying? That's really the moral of the story, really, and yeah. I don't feel like, I feel like if you take everybody off the bridge, it would just make more traffic on the street, and that's why some of us chose the bridge in the first place, to get away from all the traffic, like myself. I don't like being, you know what I'm saying, surrounded and stuff, so the bridges is more comfortable for some of us, although I know there are people that sleep and do stupid stuff on the bridge, and if there's a way we could clean it up, but I don't know if you really, that's, that's not really us, you know what I'm saying? I feel like if you take it from, you know what I'm saying, one person, it kind of affects a lot, but I, like I said, I don't wanna, I just wanna keep it brief, but that, that's it. That's my piece.
Thank you.
Commissioners, it's now ten a.m., so we can move to the public hearing section of the agenda. Item thirty-eight is to conduct a public hearing and approve, adopt, and authorize the chair to sign an ordinance to amend Title sixteen of the Clark County Code to add a new chapter, sixteen point one-three, to establish pedestrian flow zones on pedestrian bridges and up to twenty feet surrounding a touchdown structure and providing for other matters properly related thereto or take other action as appropriate.
Good morning, commissioners.
I can reread it.
Brief presentation for you. So the proposed ordinance will create pedestrian flow zones on the pedestrian bridge up to twenty feet surrounding the touchdown structures to maintain safe and continuance movement of pedestrian traffic. The ordinance will apply to pedestrian bridges in the area surrounding them, such as the elevators and escalators, which are located in the resort corridor. The resort corridor is defined from Russell Road to the south and Sahara Avenue to the north, and Valley View to the west, and Maryland Parkway to the east. The pedestrian bridges are part of the overall sidewalk system of the resort corridor, and were created for the purposes of separating pedestrian traffic from vehicular traffic to facilitate pedestrians safely crossing in the resort corridor. The pedestrian bridges were designed in a manner to facilitate the flow of pedestrian traffic in the most efficient manner possible. The bridges were not designed for pedestrians to stop, stand, or congregate other than for incidental and brief use of the Las Vegas Strip. The pedestrian flow zone is similar to pedestrian zones located in other large cities such as New York City, which ensure the safe and continuance movement of pedestrian traffic. The proposed ordinance prohibits stopping, standing, or engaging in activity while in the pedestrian flow zone with the intent of causing another person who was within the pedestrian flow zone to stop or stand. The ordinance is necessary as the pedestrian bridges create a unique public safety issue. In reviewing and preparing the ordinance to address the significant public safety issue, the county has relied on a report prepared by Dr. William Sousa. Dr. Sousa is here to provide you with a brief summary of the report regarding the public safety concerns on the pedestrian bridges. After Dr. Sousa's presentation, Metro will have a few additional comments.
Thank you, Dr. Sousa.
Good morning. As Ms. Logsdon mentioned, my name is Bill Sousa. I'm a professor in the Department of Criminal Justice at UNLV, and I'm also the director of UNLV's Center for Crime and Justice Policy. My primary area of research is crime and public safety in public spaces. I was asked to repair the report on the state of disorder on the Strip specifically as relates to the pedestrian bridges. I will summarize that report in the following points. First, disorder has been increasing on the Strip. From two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty-two, calls for disorderly offenses, so, such as fights, suspicious persons, public intoxication, and public drug activity, calls for these types of offenses were up by nearly twenty-five percent during that time. It's significant to note, however, that disorder on the Strip concentrates disproportionately on the pedestrian bridges. Although the bridges make up less than six percent of the total sidewalk system, they accounted for eleven percent of calls for disorderly offenses. Disorder on the bridges is a concern for several reasons that I outline in the report. Research indicates that increased levels of disorder can impact people's perceptions of personal safety and fear of victimization. Disorder can also generate conditions that are favorable for more disorder and potentially for serious crime, more serious crime and violence. But disorder is especially problematic within the context of a pedestrian bridge because it often encourages people to stop walking. Regardless of whether people who are stopped or engaged in inappropriate conduct, the relatively limited space along a bridge generates a higher chance for obstructions and increased crowd density. Obstructions and crowd density are significant public safety concerns on the bridges. The bridges are a confined environment with traffic flow in only two directions. Should an incident occur that triggers rapid group movement in one of those directions, a bottleneck could quickly develop that could lead to serious injuries as the result of crowd crush. Importantly, crowd density caused by people who are trying to rapidly exit a bridge can block the efforts of first responders who are then trying to enter the bridge, making their jobs more difficult and indeed more dangerous. Research demonstrates that when the nature of an environment is such that there are limited points of entry and exit, efforts should be made to facilitate the orderly movement of people and make the flow of traffic as efficient as possible. In practical terms, this means that we should encourage people to keep moving on the bridges, we should discourage people from stopping or congregating, and we should manage disorderly conditions that may cause people to stop walking. An ordinance that prohibits stopping would provide a mechanism to manage the orderly movement of people along the bridges. This would make the bridges safer for everyone to use. That is what I have to discuss if there are any questions.
I don't hear any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now I believe we have a representative from Metro here.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Andy Walsh. I'm the undersheriff with Metro, and we're here today to discuss why Metro supports the ordinance that establishes the free flow zone, free flow zones on the pedestrian bridges in the tourist corridor. For us, the pedestrian bridges present a public safety challenge, and essentially there are two major problems for the police when it comes to policing and keeping those bridges safe. First, it's the crime and disorder, as Dr. Sousa just mentioned, that occurs due to the bridges that are congested and the concealed nature of the bridges. And for officers, there's a challenge of not being able to see what is happening on the bridges when they're on foot patrol and when they're on the street below. And even when they are present on the bridges, officers have the challenge to keep the bridges safe. And without this ordinance, they do not have the tools that they need to help stop, create, to help stop the atmosphere of disorder that's created when people congregate on the bridges. And it is our belief that this ordinance, where pedestrians are mandated to keep moving, will greatly diminish the crime and disorder that occurs on the bridges and will improve public safety. And for some time, we have been concerned about crowd crush with the ever-growing number of tourists and large events that occur on Las Vegas Boulevard. We've seen large crowds on bridges during major events, and what we see is when the pedestrian bridges get packed, it's very difficult for officers to get onto those bridges and to maintain order. And it is our concern about these times where there's heavy traffic and heavy use of the bridges, and we can think of several times where the bridges were not crowded with pedestrians, but when incidents have happened in the resort corridor, calls of active shooter-type events where crowds come rushing out of casino properties, if there were folks that were congregating on those bridges, standing on those bridges, standing there with property on those bridges, it would be very difficult for people to use those bridges as an exit from what their perceptions are of the danger and also be very difficult for officers to address the threat if that were existing. If the bridges are crowded and people are not moving and their property is still there, it creates an exceptional public safety event for us. And we've been very lucky so far that we have not had a crowd crush-type incident on those bridges where people were injured, but the old saying where it's predictable, it's preventable, staring us right in the face. And I know that there's gonna be questions, and there should be questions and concerns about how we're going to enforce this, and, you know, my understanding is that there'll be the creation of these signage that says free flow zones, similar to what Dr. Sousa mentioned exists in New York City, and that Public Works will be posting those signs along the bridges on Las Vegas Boulevard. And for those that disobey the signage, officers will first be instructed to inform them, educate them on the law, in an attempt to generate voluntary compliance with the law and keep the pedestrians moving. And officers will issue a warning and ask folks to move along. And if they refuse, officers will have the ability, based on this law, to issue a citation or make an arrest, but our goal obviously is to generate voluntary compliance from members of the community and tourists alike who've used the bridges. And we believe this ordinance will help us reduce crime and disorder on the pedestrian bridges and help keep our tourists and local community safe. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
I had a question. So right now or in the future, will we have good cameras on both sides of the bridges so we'll be able to see what's happening and then also what happened retroactively?
Yes, we have a very robust camera system for Las Vegas Boulevard, obviously to protect our tourist corridor, but the cameras, you know, even when we see something on cameras, getting an officer up onto the bridge and responding is also, takes time, so that's, the cameras are useful. The cameras definitely generate our ability to respond.
But the flip side is, if anyone's complaining that we'll be able to see what happened and make sure that the enforcement is being done evenly and no one's being picked out?
Yeah, I, I think the, one of the great things about doing this, in this forum, is that, you know, the goal is to generate voluntary compliance. So it's not just the role of the police department to educate the folks in our community and tourists alike on what the law is. It's something that if we can all work together and generate education, educate and generate voluntary compliance with the law, then the question of enforcement obviously will, people will, if they obey the signage, there'll be very little questions about how it's being enforced.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. So this ordinance addresses a significant government interest in public safety. The ordinance is content neutral, as it applies equally to everyone, and is narrowly tailored to address the public safety issues of pedestrians in the resort corridor, and leaves ample alternative channels of communication as the pedestrian bridges are a small part of the entire sidewalk system in the resort corridor. This ordinance will provide our public safety officers and first responders with the tools necessary to address public safety issues and quickly manage emergency situations. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Miller? I'm sorry. Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Lisa, when it comes to the, there are a number of interests here. Have we had discussion with any of the union leadership? And if so, to what extent has anything that they've been concerned about in terms of their need to assemble and the things that become important during contract time or at other times, been incorporated into this ordinance?
Yes, Commissioner, I did work with Culinary's Council out of San Francisco. They did have some concerns with a little bit of the language, which was what was read into the record today, and so that is clarification on that when they're engaging in activity within the pedestrian flow zone, and they have to be intending to cause another person to stop in the pedestrian flow zone. So if there is picketing or different activity going down on the street level and somebody stops up at the bridge, that is not covered under this ordinance. And then we also added language that is not a violation of this section if a person stops or waits for access to an elevator for the purposes of using the facilities.
So in the case of Culinary, we've heard from them, and these are the concerns that, this addresses the concerns that they raised?
That is correct.
And we've heard from, and in the past, we've heard from, street performers. What effect does this have on street performers?
So again, as the ordinance is content neutral, it doesn't have any impact, so they can still do all of their street performing things down on the street level, or they continue to, they're continuing to walk while they do any, you know, First Amendment activity. But there's also, as I think in the report, the, the bridges are six percent of the entire overall sidewalk system, so this is a time, place, and manner restriction that is narrowly tailored, because there's other avenues in which to provide the First Amendment activity.
So we're not saying they can't be on sidewalks? Stopping on a sidewalk is not a problem. It is when you get onto the pedestrian bridges and the area that has been designated in the ordinance, that's when we have an issue.
Correct. Due to the unique public safety issues that are created on the bridges, that this ordinance is necessary and the least restrictive means to address that significant public safety issue and government interest.
I don't have any other questions right this minute.
Any other questions?
I think you can go ahead and open the public hearing.
Please. All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this proposed ordinance, please come forward.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Virginia Valentine, ten thousand West Charleston Boulevard, and I'm here today on behalf of the Nevada Resort Association, and I would like to note that there are many of my colleagues in the room, represented from the resort. You may not hear from them today, but I do want to point out that they are here to point out and underscore what an important issue, safety on the pedestrian bridges is for all of us. We appreciate the time, effort, and science that went into the thoughtful crafting of the ordinance. The work of Dr. Sousa clearly demonstrates the challenges of maintaining a safe environment on the bridge for guests, for resort employees, and for first responders on the bridges. It's important to note that unlike at-grade sidewalks, those wishing to cross Las Vegas Boulevard South or the intersecting arterals have no choice but to cross on the bridges. The bridges were designed to convey pedestrians from one side to the other and for no other purpose. The Las Vegas Visitors and Convention Authority estimated that nearly four hundred thousand people were expected for New Year's Eve. Most of those will have visited the Strip. Visitation to the Strip has increased, and large events have grown in size and number. Please consider this ordinance an ounce of prevention, one that may prevent significant injury should there be a need for rapid evacuation across a bridge or access by first responders. The ordinance will reduce the potential for chaos, may also reduce tripping hazards, and will increase the effective capacities of bridges by reducing obstructions. Today, you have an opportunity to proactively improve the safety of the pedestrian bridges for guests and employees. We urge your support. Thank you on behalf of all the resorts on Las Vegas Boulevard.
Good afternoon, uh, sorry, good morning, commissioners. I'm still in, in fort and time. I had a nice vacation for the holidays, but my name is Atar Hasseebulla, first name spelled A T H A R, last name H A S E E B U L L A H. I am the executive director for the ACLU of Nevada. I'm also a civil rights attorney. I don't think it comes as a surprise to this commission, since we've been here, we've shared with all of you that we're vehemently opposed to this proposal. We do thank Deputy County Manager Fryerson, as well as District Attorney Logsdon, for bringing us into the conversation early and sharing that there was an intent to do this, but we're still opposed. We're opposed for a number of reasons. We're not alone in our opposition. In fact, we submitted a letter on behalf of a few different groups, ACLU of Nevada, Progressive Leadership Alliance of Nevada, NAACP Las Vegas, the Nevada Partnership for Homeless Youth, Nevada Now, Nevada Homeless Alliance, Make the Road Nevada, the Clark County Black Caucus, and SEIU Local eleven oh seven, who are all opposed to this proposal and still opposed to this proposal, regardless of the minor change that was put into place today. See, what you heard was a presentation that suggested that there's data surrounding dangerous conduct, negative behavior, and increased elements surrounding crime stats being up on these bridges. You haven't heard any specificity with respect to what that crime looks like. These are general anecdotes, right? If we say that crime is up, and then we decide to criminalize the mere act of stopping, your crime rate naturally will increase if, if that is put into place, much the same way if you criminalized breathing, your crime rate would be a hundred percent. So this notion that crime rates are up are not actually telling. I can assure you that if this passes, this will result in litigation, because despite buzzwords being used about this being narrowly tailored and the least restrictive alternative, it's not. You, in fact, have all the power right now to work with Metro to have officers placed on these bridges permanently, i- if crime is so bad on the bridges. That's not been done, not a single time. These bridges are being surveilled. That's also not been done. There's not been any sort of additional elements you're asking for, or Metro is asking for another tool in the toolbox, and we keep hearing this phrase, this is the same tool that's been used. It's another carceral policy that's put in place. I encourage you, if you're in support of the First Amendment, to not move forward with this proposal. There's a, there's a multitude of things that can be done, but why aren't you asking the questions today about why Metro's not assigned to be on the bridges? There certainly can be if it's so dangerous up there. That hasn't happened. Again, regardless of, if you sign off on this today or not, I, I can assure you that there's gonna be further questions surrounding this. We're gonna end up having to litigate this. We don't wanna be in that posture. And again, if I'm the Resorts Association, I understand it from their perspective, I would want to have the ability to remove whoever I wanted to I would want to have the ability to remove whoever I wanted as well. That goes without saying. They're business enterprises, but you have a responsibility as Commissioners to ensure there's a check and a balance. And simply asking for data on the back end of what's going to end up being disproportionate enforcement is insufficient. We need this to be stopped now. If it's not stopped now, again, this is going to end up resulting in litigation. I know that many of you are strong advocates for the First Amendment, so I'd encourage you to vote no today and not move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Eve, E-V-E, Hanan, H-A-N-A-N. I am a professor at the Boyd School of Law at UNLV, and I'm the Director of the Misdemeanor Clinic in the Thomas and Mack Legal Clinic there. I'm speaking to you today not representing the views of UNLV, but representing the interests of our clients in the misdemeanor clinics, where our students, our law students, particularly third-year law students, have the opportunity to represent clients charged with misdemeanors in the justice courts. Many of the cases do arise out of incidents and arrests and citations that occur on -- in the strip corridor as well. I speak today opposed to this for constitutional and policy reasons. I think it's bad policy for at least two reasons. One is that it takes an issue, which is essentially an urban planning and a crowd control issue, which is pedestrian flow, and makes it into a criminal matter, carrying up to six months in jail. Pedestrian flow is a matter for urban planners, and it is, to a certain extent, a matter for police insofar as they enforce the existing laws. But it is not traditionally seen as a crime. So this is an overcriminalization problem which has downstream consequences. Our clients are working-class people. They are sometimes working-class people who have fallen through the cracks. They're people who may be trying to make money doing something without the proper license, perhaps vending or something like that. Those are existing crimes. To add more crimes, to put more fines on them, to put them in positions where they have opened cases for months and years, which inhibits them from getting jobs, it's simply not good policy for this commission. The law is simple. Even with the changes that are proposed today, this law is void for vagueness. This is not a First Amendment argument. It's a due process argument with clear Supreme Court case law in Desert Rain and Morales being the two foundational cases. Stopping, standing, the intent to cause someone else to stop or stand, this is simply too vague, and the elevator exception doesn't cure it. If someone says, "Excuse me, could you please stop and give me directions?" "Excuse me, could you please take our picture as we stand here with the view in the background?" These actions would be criminalized under this law. That makes it void for vagueness. It's impossible for an ordinary person to know when they're in compliance with the law. Now, Metro has told us that they will use their discretion to not arrest those folks, but to let those folks know what the law is and to only arrest others. But that, Commissioners, is exactly what Desert Rain and Morales and the Supreme Court case law teaches us, is where the problem lies. It's selective prosecution. They have in mind, and this commission may have in mind, who ought to be prosecuted under this. So it's a law not meant for equal enforcement. So with that, I'll conclude my time, and I'd be happy at a later date to provide more information on those constitutional issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone else here wishing to speak on the ordinance? He already spoke once. I'm sorry, you already spoke on this ordinance.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mitchell Langberg from Brownstein Hyatt. One thing that you have not heard except from Dr. Sousa and from Metro is about the unique nature of these bridges. This issue about the bridges being just 6% of the overall sidewalk system is very important because all of the speech-related issues that you've heard about can occur, if not otherwise prevented, in the other 94% of the sidewalk system. And this is a critical aspect of this time, place, or manner restriction, as County Counsel has told you. The Supreme Court recognizes that there are times where a legislative body needs to make a law that might have an incidental effect on speech. That is, speech isn't the target, as it is not the target here. And when an ordinance such as this has an incidental effect on First Amendment activity and is merely a restriction on either the time, the place, or the manner of speech, and this is a restriction on could impact the place or manner of speech, the Supreme Court instructs that there needs to -- it needs to be content-neutral, which this is. That is, there's no specific content, it's not even speech that's being directly targeted, that it needs to be narrowly tailored to a significant government interest. You've heard from Metro, Dr. Sousa and County Counsel, what this significant interest is. It's the unique nature of these bridges. It is the fact that by the time something happens that creates urgency in a crowd flow, it is too late to take action to clear the bridges and make them unobstructed. It's because it is a funnel on both ends that people going down the escalators are going to prevent first responders from going up, and anything that creates additional blockage is going to make things more dangerous. So that significant government interest is targeted by preventing people from stopping or standing on that 6% of the sidewalk system. And the last thing the Supreme Court cares about, it thinks is important, says is important, is that there'd be alternate -- alternative -- sorry, ample alternative channels for the speech that might be impacted. And the truth is, is that people who are engaged in First Amendment activity, that are earning their livings from tips presumably from entertainment activities, if they -- all they need to do is go down to the surface level. And for the most part, they will be speaking to the exact same audience that they would speak to if they were on the bridges themselves, because almost everybody is either going to come up or down those escalators, except for the few that come out on the second level. And based on that, based on this government interest, based on the fact that this is narrowly tailored for that, and based on those ample alternative channels, this passes constitutional muster. There is no question to any reasonable person about what's allowed and what's not allowed. It's not vague. There is no stopping. There is no standing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here wishing to speak? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for comments by the Commissioners.
I had a question.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, with regards to, I know there's going to be some signage that's going to be put up. With regards to the 20 feet from touchdown structures, will there be markings for the 20 feet so that those who want to still do whatever they want to do will know where the 20 feet is?
That is correct. And that's why it says "up to," because in some areas, there's not even up to 20 feet around there. So it would be no more than 20, but in some areas, it will be smaller than that, around those areas.
Commissioner McCurdy? And also, this IT person came up. I need my password again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that it's important just to get a few things on the record. Thank you to all of our presenters and also those who spoke in public comment during this period. I think that we should get clearly on the record that the application of the law will be done equally. We need to make sure that there is data that's kept by our law enforcement officers to ensure that it is not being applied in an equitable manner. So if there is a, you know, for example, a street performer performing and there's a showgirl, I expect for both to have the same type of interaction with law enforcement. And as it relates to law enforcement, I think that we need to have some assurances that as we seek to enforce this law, we need to be made aware of, you know, how we're going to position our law enforcement officers in and around the flow zone to ensure that, you know, we're not deploying resources where they're not needed. I know that we do have surveillance in the area, and we have a high level of surveillance in the corridor, but we do certainly need to make sure that the education that's done around the law, if it is to be passed today, that the officers know that we can't disproportionately target one group or another. I think that that's where a large majority of the concern is coming from, and I think that that's also valid because at the end of the day, it's our responsibility to ensure that we are creating policy that is going to be equitably applied to all of our residents and also tourists alike. And also to this notion of the discretion, how are we going to make sure that, you know, one person that's warned first time, second time, you know, comes before a body after receiving a misdemeanor, how are we going to make sure that that person's not getting a slap on the wrist and another person, who may have done the exact same thing, is not getting up to, you know, up to six months in jail? I think that that's a very, very important question that we have to answer, and I know that we don't have any jurisdiction over what our, you know, our judges do, but I think that's a great consideration that we need to have as we move forward this policy. And lastly, I certainly understand that it is incredibly important that we maintain the health and safety of our residents and tourists alike, and also protect our main lifeblood of our economy, which is the resort corridor, that we just make sure that we're doing it in a manner that's consistent with, you know, our board's vision, which we know we just had a historic month, you know, not only, you know, through the airport, but also through the beds, the heads that's been going in our beds. But we just need to make sure that if this is to, you know, to be passed and it is litigated, that we are sure that, you know, we have firm footing to stand on. And it sounds like there is footing, but I guess that's yet to be determined.
Anything further? Mr. Gibbs?
The -- very often, our focus in our discussion has been about tourists, you know, what do they think? What do they experience? Is there -- are they afraid for themselves? Is it a safe environment as we move to continue to move this destination forward and grow it and grow its appeal? One of the things that has motivated me very heavily is the fact that we have over 100,000 of our residents who work in this area and utilize those bridges themselves. And I'm very -- I've been very concerned for their safety as well. Notionally, well, before I do that, I'm aware, because I've -- the convention center area I commend is -- covers half of the strip that I have, most of the strip, I guess all of the strip, and all that I have, and I have a lot. I've spent a lot of time with Captain Connell to get a sense of what the stresses are in terms of managing what's happening on the strip. And it's really clear to me that there is already an awful lot of police presence out there. The police are on the bridges. They are surged to areas when they need to be, but they need additional support, additional help, as we've heard today from the Under Sheriff. And I think that the reality is, we have provided for a fair and, I think, adequate, more than adequate notice to the public. I think that there is ample opportunity for speech, ample alternatives, I think is the term that Counsel used. When you get right down to it, the unique nature of these bridges and the unique nature of this city and the unique nature of Las Vegas Boulevard, when there can be 100,000 people moving up and down the street at the same time and accessing the bridges and moving along as they do, that becomes really important. It's essential to us that we have -- that we provide the tools to the Police Department to be able to do what needs to be done. In the rare occasion that someone is going to object, where someone is going to refuse to abide by an ordinance that is a lawful ordinance, that makes all the sense in the world and has its objective to keep every pedestrian that would move along around those bridges, up and down the elevators, safe. It is for those reasons that -- and those reasons were important a year ago or more when we started thinking about and before we had thought it through fully, came with an ordinance that was not this ordinance. It was a different approach. And after the hearing, it was apparent that some of the things that have been discussed today were not a part of that ordinance. This ordinance, I think, is really clean. I think it's clear, it's direct, it's short, not a lot to know. And I think that we obviously must trust that our Police Department will be fair and equitable in the way they exercise their discretion. I have every confidence that they will be. To the extent that they are not, then there will be a price to be paid. But it is my view that with the kind of education that will occur there, that we won't have issues. And so unless there's something more that would compel us to do otherwise, I would move the adoption of this ordinance.
Just taking a point of personal privilege, I did have a comment I wanted to make, in conjunction with what you said, and that is, this is a work in progress, so we need to really monitor this. So I would urge everyone to really make sure that this is enforced correctly because this -- the lifeblood of the strip is these walkways. We wouldn't be here unless there was a need for it, but we also need to make sure that we don't overcrack something. So anyway, move for -- or cast your votes. And that passes.
Okay.